Good evening. Today is Tuesday, September 6, 2022. The time is 6:00 PM. The regular meeting of the following will come to order. The Victorville City Council and the same council also sitting as the Victorville Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rel Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency, the City's Housing Assets Successor, Joint Powers Financing Authority, and the Victorville Water District. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Becerra.
Present.
Councilmember Gomez.
Here.
Mayor Protem Irving.
Present.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you very much. All right, we're now going to move on to our invocation led this evening by Pastor Josh Gerberock of the First Assembly of God Church. Following that will be the Pledge of Allegiance by our Police Captain John Wickham. Pastor, welcome. Everyone will please stand if you're able.
It's a blessing to pray tonight, so thanks for the opportunity and take that very seriously. So let's pray. Laura, thank you so much. This for your presence tonight. We invite you in these council chambers. I pray, Lord, that you will guide every decision that's made tonight. Give wisdom to all these council members. Lord, we look to you for our city. We pray, God, your touch upon the city of Victorville. Lord, pray your protection upon it, your blessings. I pray, Lord, that it would prosper and help people. Lord, I think of the first responders even in this room tonight. I pray your protection upon them. My heart thinks about the fire, Lord, that are being fought across our state and even near us. Lord, we pray your protection upon all firefighters, police officers, Lord, first responders. And Lord, we honor you tonight. Lord, we thank you for our great city. Look forward to the future, Lord, what you have and hope that you give us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Captain. All right, thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Captain. We're now going to move on to the presentation of our agenda and any revisions there too, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are no revisions to our agenda.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Conflict of Interest declarations, council members. Okay, then we're going to go ahead and move on then to our introduction to public comments. And before I do that, Madam Clerk, do we have requests?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
All right, so with that said, everyone, welcome to tonight's meeting of the Victorville City Council. Your city council is interested in your ideas and opinions and furthermore endeavors to incorporate them into its deliberations. At the same time, the council must be able to carry out its business in an organized and efficient manner free from material disruption. Therefore, this meeting will be administered in accordance with the council's established policies and procedures and Government Code Section 549, 57.9. Individuals may speak on agenda items or on issues not posted on the agenda during the public comments section, providing those issues are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Individual speakers may address the council once per public comment period and once per each public hearing item for up to three minutes. Additional time may be allocated for appeal hearings in accordance with the city's adopted policy and procedures manual. Those who desire to comment on a public hearing item may wish to reserve their remarks until that particular public hearing item has been opened. All testimony is to be directed solely to the council. Although open meeting laws do not permit council members to engage in dialogue with any speaker during the public comment periods, please know your comments and questions may be taken into consideration by council members when discussing the particular agenda item. The presiding officer may briefly respond or have staff respond to statements or questions or may request that the staff report back to the council at a subsequent meeting. Speakers are requested to comment as briefly as the subject permits. Individual council members who speak as a member of the public do so without the semblance or presumption of authority derived from her public office and are subject to the same meeting rules of conduct and decorum as other public participants. Whether attending this meeting in person or via Zoom, once comments are invited, the speaker will be called on by name and recognized by the presiding officer. The speaker will state the item number that will be addressed or that the subject is a non-agendized matter. Audience members may not disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of this meeting and those who do are subject to removal from the meeting pursuant to Penal Code 403. Your understanding and cooperation are appreciated. With that, Madam Clerk, may we have the first speaker from in chambers if there are any?
Yes, our first speaker is Al Cattio on a non-agendized item.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Cattio.
Hi, everybody. I'm here to do something I hope I never would have to do again in my life. And I never thought I would have to do it now. When I was a little kid, I always wanted to be a cop. Like, the cops were heroes my whole life. Even when I came here, I tried to get them, he knows, I tried to get them bulletproof windows and they turned it down. I tried to get them five-point seat belts and they agreed, but the cops didn't want them. So anyway, on 2020, January 1st, I never break the law. I called the police. They came to my house. I told them exactly what happened. He took me by the arm and walked me around. It was about, I was laying in bed with my dog. A guy come down, I'm in a mobile home, he was behind all my bedroom window. I don't know what the hell he was doing. He says, I got a gun and I'm gonna kill you. And I talked to him about 20 minutes, I don't know why. And he says, okay, I want you to come out and have a gun and I'm gonna kill you. I said, I have a gun too and I'm coming out. So I come out, I went to my, on my property beside my mobile home and I fired two shots into the ground, hoping that would scare him away. And he took off like a big bird. So when the police come there, he wasn't there. The head sheriff guy, I guess, took me by the arm. He said, let's walk around. I gave him my gun, he gave it back to me. I gave it back to him, he gave it back to me. He was walking me, holding me by the arm, walking me around. He said, I live on a golf course, so we, behind my fence. He said, let's go on the golf course. I said, I'm not going on the golf course, there's people out there playing golf. He said, okay. I turned around and came back. He said, let's go to the front where the guy was and make sure he's gone. I said, I know he's gone, I already looked. They give me my gun back to go look to see if the guy was still there. His gun was holstered. So he walked me to the front. I had my gun, I held it down. I said, the guy's gone, you see? He said, okay. I gave him my gun right back. A little while later, he come out and grabbed me. There was a whole bunch of, they went and get all my neighbors outside to watch the cop beat the shit out of me. And they brought the fire engines over. They brought all the firemen over and they stood me up. And they had a cop on each side. They said, you see that guy right there? He's a criminal. That's what a criminal looks like. I never had a police record in my life and I still don't. My trial was ongoing. The Sheriff's Department decided they were gonna be my judge.
Your time is up.
The executioner.
Mr. Cattio, thank you.
Right there.
Mr. Cattio, your time is up.
In front of all.
Madam Clerk, will you silence the thing? Thank you, Mr. Cattio, your time is up. We have three minutes per speaker. What, oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
It's been three minutes.
It's been three minutes, your time is up, sir. We're not cutting you short, those are the rules for everyone, Mr. Cattio, but we appreciate your coming and speaking to us. Mr. Cattio, will you please step back from the podium? Your time is up. Mr. Cattio, step back. Member Gomez, you will sit down.
Shut up. I'm trying to make sure that he sits down.
Is out of order and will sit down. Mr. Cattio, please have a seat or leave the chambers. If you do not, I will ask you to be removed if you do not confine yourself, sir. Member Gomez has left the dais without permission of the chair. Thank you again, Mr. Cattio, Madam Clerk.
There are no additional in-chamber speakers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Would please set the, excuse me, let's go ahead and go on to our Zoom request to speak.
There are no Zoom speakers, Madam Mayor.
All right, will you please set the timer for 30 seconds in case someone is attempting to get in and is having difficulties? We certainly want to be available to help.
Madam Mayor, 30 seconds has lapsed and there are no additional speakers.
Thank you very much. So the public comment period is now closed and the chair brings the item back to the council. We're now going to move on to our first business in order this evening, which is public hearings, beginning with item number one. This is the Proposed Updated Electric Service Rules and Regulations. Mr. Metzler, will you introduce the item, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Yes, this item is a fairly routine item in that we traditionally review and update our rules and regulation for the Victorville Municipal Utility. The Victorville Municipal Utility, of course, operates an electric utility system at SCLA and at Foxborough and effectively the rules and regulations are the governing document as to how the electric utility is to operate. As a part of that annual review, this year, we've identified a couple of areas that required attention, particularly the subject involving net metering and including some provisions that facilitate net metering, metering, I should say, amongst customers of the Victorville Utility, along with clarifying some service territory language as well. So with that, the author on this item is your Director of Electric Utility Services, Ms. Brenda Hampton. She's here in the audience and available for any questions or comments you might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Metzler. And the recommendation, please, Madam Clerk?
That the Honorable City Council open and conduct a public hearing, receive testimony for adoption of proposed Resolution Number 22-092, enclose the public hearing, and adopt Resolution Number 22-092 to amend and revise the electric service rules and regulations for utility services provided by Victorville Municipal Utility Services to commercial and industrial customers located within the Southern California Logistics Airport and Foxborough Industrial Park effective of October 1, 2022.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we're going to move on to technical questions for clarification as to the staff report. We're going to go ahead and begin with Member Becerra.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Metzler, I just have one question. During these trying times of the electrical grid in California being stretched to the limit, how is it going out there with our electrical service?
As of this moment, you know what? I'm not going to take Ms. Hampton's thunder. She's standing. I'll go ahead and ask Ms. Hampton to address that as she and I had spoken about this over the weekend.
We haven't had any issues and no outages. We are letting our customers know that they need to conserve energy if they can and that we do have an energy emergency right now in California. But we have not had any outages.
Have we seen the demand go up? We have a few of food handlers, you could say, out there that their buildings need to be very cold. Are they pulling to our limits also?
We are, I mean, just in general, we have a pretty consistent demand on our products. And so we haven't seen anything extreme. Haven't seen a great increase, but we do have increased demand now with the new buildings that have come in. So the new, the new builds.
Thank you very much. Thank you for everything you guys are doing out there.
Thank you. Member Gomez?
Yes, my first question is during, sorry, we're on item number one, the Proposed Updated Electrical Service Rules and Regulations. So right now, it's my understanding that we're going to be adopting, amending, and revising the electrical service rules for VMS. So I wanted to understand if that's because we're trying to catch up to any assembly or Senate bills or if it's because maybe there's a population growth or what is it that causes this change today?
So the main purpose of the change is to add the option for net metering and that allows our customers, if they would like to install generation on their facilities to offset their costs, solar generation, wind generation, battery power. It provides information to them on how they can do it, how they volunteer for that, what kind of application process there is. So that's the main purpose. We also did add a rule on service territory and that really was just to provide clarification on VMS's options and rights associated with service.
So since we're dealing with VMS, it's only, it's not our residential customers, but more the industrial and a certain sector of the commercial side, right?
That's correct.
So how has that population been notified or have they provided any input? How are we bringing them to see what they feel about what is happening?
So for instance, this is a public hearing item. So they've been noticed both publicly and we've sent emails to them to let them know that this is on the agenda. And so they have the opportunity to review and ask any questions that they might have. And we've had ongoing discussions. It's a fairly small grid, fairly, you know, not that many customers. So we've had conversations with those customers that have been interested in going through this process.
Are there any exceptions or waivers for any of these customers? Or any kind of, not necessarily penalties, but fees or anything that they would incur? Maybe something that they look at the future as something they have to mandatorily do, but not currently?
The only fee that we've introduced is a fee for an application. If they want to go through the net metering process, there is an initial fee and that covers some of the processing costs associated with it. And there will be some additional costs, of course, if they decide to go through with the process.
So is this per company or is this per parcel, per track? How, how is this application going to be?
Well, if, for instance, if they want to put a solar array on their rooftop, then they will put in an application for that solar array.
Okay, is this something municipalities are doing or is this something that we're doing as a business with VMS to grow?
This is really industry-wide. It's an industry-wide practice and it helps to encourage growth in, on the renewable side and offset some of the electricity issues.
So we're definitely not the wholesalers in this, in this realm. We're most likely the one that is the middleman, so.
So this would be, they would install their own facility, whatever that is, whether it's solar or wind or batteries. And they would pay for that, they would maintain it, they would have to meet our requirements and that would offset some of their potential demand on our side, on the VMS side.
Thank you, no further questions?
Thank you, Member Gomez, Member Protem.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess as I read this report, my interest was piqued, especially in light of reading an article about what's happening with the Colorado River. And maybe my question is for another conversation. But our electric services, in the event, what capacity do we have? I know this is focused on commercial businesses, but in the event of emergency or disaster, do we have the capacity to handle more than? I guess, like I said, this might be a conversation or a question for another conversation because it's definitely not your main to the proposed resolution. You know what? I'll pull that question and talk to you.
I appreciate it. I was just, I would be happy to talk to you anytime upon if you want to discuss.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, I appreciate that. And the chair has no questions as it relates to the staff report. And open, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing to receive public testimony. Madam Clerk, any requests?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any requests via Zoom?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, with that said, will you please set the timer for 30 seconds in the event that we have a member of our Zoom audience who may wish to chime in?
Madam Mayor, 30 seconds have lapsed and there are no speakers.
Thank you very much. Chair closes the public hearing and brings this item back to the council, invites a motion from the council as to point two, as posted on the agenda since we've already disposed of point one.
Councilwoman Gomez would like to make that motion as recommended by staff.
Second.
To adopt staff recommendation, Member Gomez, thank you. We have a first and a second to adopt staff recommendation as it relates to point two. We're now going to take discussion on the pending motion, beginning with the maker, Member Gomez.
Not at the moment.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Discussion, thank you.
Thank you, Member Becerra.
No discussion.
Thank you, chair has no discussion on the pending motion, closes the discussion period. Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So the council's taken action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda as to point two. Moving on to item number two, this is a general plan amendment, planned unit development, site plan, and tentative tract map with an initial study and mitigated negative declaration to allow for the development of a mixed-use commercial and residential project on an approximately thirty-four acre site that includes approximately two hundred thirty thousand six hundred thirty-two square feet of commercial space and three hundred and seventy-six multifamily residential units and a request to reconfigure eighteen parcels via a tentative tract map on property located north of and abutting Bear Valley Road between Second Avenue and Third Avenue. Mr. Metzler, will you tee up the item, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. In addition to the summary you just provided, this effectively is a zone change, a developer-initiated zone change request from general commercial to the PUD. It has been discussed at the Planning Commission level and did receive unanimous approval at the Planning Commission hearing. This item is being brought to your attention because it involves a zone change and effectively the zone change is what triggers a need for a general plan amendment. Otherwise, had it not required or pursued the zone change, the action could have stood at the Planning Commission level. So that's the main reason why this item is here, unlike similar items. The author on this item is your director, your city planner, Mr. Scott Webb. He's available for any questions or comments you might have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Metzler. Madam Clerk, the recommendation, please?
That the Honorable City Council conduct a public hearing, receive testimony regarding the proposed project, and take the following actions: Adopt the attached mitigated negative declaration with a mitigated monitoring and reporting program for the project. Introduce planned unit development ordinance number twenty-four thirty-one for adoption and first reading by title only. Waive further reading in full of proposed ordinance number twenty-four thirty-one. Adopt Resolution Number Twenty-two dash zero nine seven, approving a general plan amendment to change property from a commercial to mixed-use land use. Adopt Resolution Number Twenty-two dash zero nine eight, approving the site plan for the project. And adopt Resolution Twenty-two dash zero nine nine, approving the tentative tract map for the project.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we're now going to move into technical questions for clarification as it relates to the staff report. And we're going to begin this time with Member Gomez.
During the preliminary review process with the licensed civil engineer, the land surveyor, were there any discussions of issues and processing times that delayed the standards for processing the tentative tract map?
Could you be, Madam Mayor, council? This project goes through a normal review period, just like any other project. Our city provides comments within a short time period. And those are incorporated by the developer and brought forward to the Planning Commission, in this case, the City Council. I'm not aware of any delays with this project in particular.
How long does it take to process a tentative tract map?
Most tentative tract maps require CEQA compliance, so we have to take that through state clearinghouse review. Normally takes three to six months to take a tentative tract map through that process and post the necessary public notices and bring it before the Planning Commission.
And what occurs after the legal recordation of decorations?
At that point, they post bonds with their engineering department.
Sorry, I missed the first word?
At that point, it's a recorded map. And at that point, they can get bonds issued and start the public improvements and also get the necessary building permits to construct on site.
And how is the city ensured that the areas within the subdivisions are dedicated for public purposes, that they'll be properly improved by the subdivider so that they no longer become an undue process to the community? There's language within the report that talks about this. So what are we doing to ensure that this does take place?
As I mentioned in the first question, response to that question, that they're required by our code to submit security bonds. And the city holds those bonds until the public improvements are in place.
And were there any exceptions or waivers that the developer had to obtain from the city for approval of the final map?
In this application, the developer has not proceeded with the final map yet. They're waiting on the City Council to take action on the tentative map first. And that gives them the right to proceed with the final map.
So how long did it take for this particular developer to go through the process?
I don't have all of that information in front of me, but the developer's been working with the city, I would say, for at least a year.
Thank you. And can the city guarantee that the subdivisions were consistent with the zoning requirements or the planning or the general plan provisions?
Could you state that again?
Yes. Can the city guarantee that the subdivisions were consistent with the zoning requirements or the general plan provisions?
Yes, that is noted in the staff report.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Member Gomez. Member Protim?
I just have a question for clarification. The only reason this is before us is because we are amending the general plan to do a zone change, correct? To include residential dwellers?
That is correct.
Thank you. Member Protim? Member Becerra?
Mr. Webb, but I did notice it's District One and District Two. Is that the order they're going to build or no, just the way they divided it?
Great question. That's mainly just to show the separation between the residential area, which is District One, and the commercial area, which is District Two on the south end.
Okay. And I did notice that it's going to be three hundred and seventy-six unit. Is that going to help us with arena numbers?
It would, yes.
Are any of the three hundred and seventy-six units that are going to be billed low income?
That has not been mentioned by the developer. The developer is here today. So during public comment, probably asked that question. He can divulge that information. But to our knowledge, it's a market rate facility.
Okay. And then I noticed in District Two, leaving the shopping center, it's going to leave between Second and Third Avenue. Are we putting in another signal light there? Or it's just going to be a ingress and regress, not to go across?
Yes, there will be a signal at Third Avenue.
Okey-dokey. No further questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Member Becerra. All right. And the Chair has no questions as it relates to the staff report and opens the public hearing for public testimony. Madam Clerk?
I have no public speakers on this item unless you wish to speak to the representative.
Unless there's questions from council members, no. Do you have any requests via Zoom?
No, Madam Mayor.
You set the timer for thirty seconds in the event that someone via our Zoom audience would like to chime in.
Madam Mayor, thirty seconds has lapsed and there are no speakers.
All right. Thank you. The Chair closes the public hearing, brings this item back to the council. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title of the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville, adopting the planned unit development portion of case number PLA N twenty-one dash zero 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 two-three, a planned unit development to allow for a zone change to rezone approximately thirty-four acres of general commercial designated land to mixed-use designated land and to allow for the establishment of site-specific development standards and land use allowance in conjunction with the planned unit development on property located north of and abutting Bear Valley Road between Second Avenue and Third Avenue.
All right. Thank you. At this point, the Chair invites a motion from the council.
Madam Mayor, motion to approve all of staff's recommendations, one through six?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gomez would like to second that?
Thank you. Ever first by Member Becerra, second by Member Gomez. We're now going to move into discussion on the pending motion. Member Becerra?
No discussion. Thank you. Very excited about it.
Thank you, Member Gomez.
None. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim.
My share, my colleagues' sentiments, very exciting. Other than that, no comments.
And I'll echo the same sentiments as well. With that said, the discussion period's closed. Madam Clerk, the vote, please.
Councilmember Becerra? Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So the council has taken action to adopt staff's recommendation as set forth on the agenda. Now moving on to item number three, this is the annexation of tract map number twenty-two seven five into Drainage Facilities Assessment District Number One and Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Number Six. Mr. Metzler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Tract map number two zero two seven five is located at the southwest corner of Luna and Montevista Road. It's one hundred and thirty-five, a single-family unit tract. And as conditions imposed upon that tract, like many other tracts, there's a requirement to properly mitigate things like drainage and also to have maintenance of landscaping in place in perpetuity to survive the development of the tract. And so with that, the developer in this particular case has requested, effectively initiated, a request to annex that track into DFAT or Drainage Facilities Assessment Number One or LMED Number Six, which is Landscape Maintenance Assessment District. So with that, as is customary with these types of annexations, an election has to occur. And with majority approval of the owners of the subject property, that then would decide the fate of the annexation into the respective districts. So with that, the author on this item is your city engineer, Mr. Brian Gangler. He's available for any questions or comments you might have.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, the recommendation?
That the Honorable City Council conduct the public hearing, take testimony, conclude the public hearing, and direct the city clerk to tabulate the assessment ballots. Adopt Resolutions Number Twenty-two dash one zero one and Twenty-two dash one zero two, declaring the results of the property owner protest ballots. If no majority protest exists, adopt Resolution Numbers Twenty-two one oh three and Twenty-two one oh four, confirming that no majority protest exists, adopting the engineer's report as final, ordering the annexation of tract map number two zero two seven five to Drainage Facility Assessment District Number One and Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Number Six, and the levy and collection of assessments on the parcels therein commencing in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. With that said, we're going to move on to questions from council members. We're going to begin with Mayor Protim Irving this time. Thank you. Thank you, Member Becerra.
Mr. Metzler, I read in page... Six seventeen, the property owner is asking to join the LMED, correct? Of course, he's not being, it's, people are going to know that they're already in it when they buy their homes in the city.
That is correct. This is developer-initiated. Effectively, the developer is asking to have the levy assessed on its property. The levy actually gets recorded. It's a recorded instrument on all of the property. So any ultimate development and sales to other private parties noticing will be provided through the title of the property.
So if you don't want to pay, you don't move into that tract?
I would agree with that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Member Becerra. Member Gomez?
Yes. What are the time limits and extensions for tentative maps? I probably confused thought about a tentative map when I looked at the Drainage Facility Assessment. And if that's the case, you can let me know.
There is a life to tentative maps. Mr. Gangler, you want to talk through the life of tentative maps before they either dissolve or are required to vest? I could make an attempt, but Mr. Webb is better qualified to answer that question than I am. Would you be willing to?
Yes. Good evening again. A tentative map has an initial life of three years and it can be extended for two more times, for another six years, so a total of nine years.
Does the owner's statement acknowledge for privacy drainage access and public easements?
Related to the map itself, yes. The, both the drainage easements and the landscape maintenance easement allows for access.
And how does the annexation affect property taxes of both the owner and the community? And would it be able to include police protection, ambulance service, fire protection, water service, library, et cetera?
Well, these specific assessments are only related to the, in this case, the drainage facilities and the landscape facilities and nothing more. So there are no other services in the assessments.
And how will the property be affected by zoning?
This property was already approved for development within the appropriate zoning. And so now it is reaching the final stage of development.
And is there an area to be annexed? Is this, is this the area that we're annexing considered a sphere of influence, an unincorporated area to the city or what is it?
It is within our city limits.
Thank you. I have no, actually, I have another question. So talking about tabulation of the ballots, how and where exactly will it be tabulated?
The city clerk could probably answer that question.
Madam Clerk?
I have the ballots in front of me, so once I've given direction to open the ballots, I will do so and look at the responses and let you know if there is a majority protest.
And from what source is the majority protest calculated?
From the ballots received. So depending on the number of ballots and the number of yeses and nos would determine whether there's a majority protest.
So in other words, there's only one developer, so it takes the developer to say yes and that's it, right? I mean, I'm trying to understand if there's nobody yet and there's only one person saying yes. I mean, how many nos can you get?
The standing party involved in this transaction is the property owner. And effectively, they're the only ones that have standing to actually cast a ballot. So if it's one or two property owners, then that's all the ballots required to be reviewed. Again, I think revisiting some earlier comments characterizing this item, this is a developer requested, developer-initiated. They're asking themselves to be self-assessed. And so it's easy to presume that the ballots that will be opened are cast in the affirmative since they are the ones that asked for the self-assessment.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Member Gomez. And the Chair has questions as it relates to the staff report. Going to move on to the public hearing to receive public testimony. Madam Clerk, any request to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
And by the way, the hearing is open. There's no requests in chambers or Zoom?
That's correct.
Thank you. Will please set the timer for thirty seconds?
Thirty seconds has lapsed and there are no speakers.
All right. Thank you. So the Chair closes the public hearing and brings this item back to the council. Madam Clerk, will you kindly tabulate the assessment ballots?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, for Drainage Facility Assessment District One, there is no majority protest. And for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Number Six, there is no majority protest.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The Chair now invites a motion from the council as to points four through six as posted on the agenda since we've already taken up points one through three.
I'd like to make that motion as recommended by staff.
You would like to recommend that we adopt staff's recommendation?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. We have a first by Member Gomez, a second by Mayor Protam Irving as it relates to points four through six on the agenda. Discussion on the pending motion, beginning with the maker, Member Gomez.
Yes, I do have a couple of comments based on presumptions that were addressed from the city council as if future...
This is on the pending motion?
Yes, as if future owners may have a knowledge. I don't know that we do or don't unless we have a workshop. Maybe we'd have more knowledge. I mean, I didn't know this. I'm barely learning this as I sit here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam, excuse me. Yeah, Mayor Protam. Thank you, Member Becerra. Thank you. Chair has no comments on the pending motion, closes the discussion period. Madam Clerk, the vote, please.
Councilmember Becerra. Councilmember Gomez. Mayor Protam Irving.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So the council's adopted staff recommendations as posted on the agenda for points four through six. Moving on to our next business in order, which is the consent calendar, items four through nineteen.
I have five, seven, seventeen, and nineteen that I'd like to ask questions or make comments about.
Five, seven, seventeen, and nineteen.
Through nineteen. Five, seven, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen.
Seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Okay, and just because it's been a little while, certainly, and for the benefit of our audience, council members can comment on consent calendar items or ask for minor clarifications without the need for pulling the item for separate consideration. Yes?
I may have a question on number five.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
And on number five? Number six. Alrighty. So with all of that said, so comment or questions for clarification has to be necessarily limited in nature, or the chair is going to request that a motion be made to pull the agenda item for separate consideration. With that said, we're going to begin with Member Gomez's requests on number five, please.
So will the grant funding be going to de-escalating training to reduce injuries from citizens and law enforcement personnel? Do we know that?
At this time, I don't know that.
Is the award also inclusive of the 2020 BJA coronavirus emergency supplemental funding of the one hundred and eighty, or is that different?
That sounds like it's different.
The next one?
The next one, let's go ahead and take up number six since that's the next one.
Did you wish?
Yes. We'll just take them in order to make it easy for everyone.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Do you mind if I ask my question regarding?
On number five, sure?
I just have a real quick question. It looks like we're going to get a lump sum of these federal grant monies. Can you just expound upon how the Ninth Circuit ruling will how it will impact all the duties that are denominated in the discussion?
The Ninth Circuit decision that's mentioned here in the staff report?
Yes.
To my knowledge, it won't. It'll actually allow us, now that it's been decided, allow us to move forward in using these funds similar to how we've used them before, largely for special project, special enforcement efforts.
Oh, we won't be sharing certain information across... Okay, very good. Thank you.
Got it. All right, thank you, Mayor Protam. All right, Member Becerra, so sorry.
Page thirteen of your... Thirteen of your report, or eight-forty-five, it says monthly inspections, eighteen ninety-three. It says monthly stops. Is this what they catch out in the field and they pull over and stop?
Sorry, I'm just catching up.
Then I know.
Page eight-forty-five?
Eight-forty-five. It's the thirteenth page of his report, the monthly inspection report, and it says monthly inspections, eighteen ninety-three, and then monthly stops, thirteen ninety-one. Is it like they catch me doing my roof without a permit and they say, "Stop work because you need a permit"?
It's possible, but I think the best answer is going to come from our chief building official, Mr. Joe Slayers.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I don't know that I've formally introduced myself, but Joe Slayers, building official. That difference is mostly explained by basically an inspection, a stop with multiple inspections. For instance, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, something along those lines.
Or stop work order.
Well, we don't necessarily count that as an inspection, but that does occur, obviously.
I thought that meant monthly stops, they see me working on my roof without a permit and pulled over and saying, "Stop working".
We certainly issue those orders, but that typically will result in inspections, but we don't necessarily count that as an inspection for the sake of that report.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
And good job, by the way, on the monthly report. You guys have been busy?
We have, thank you.
Thank you, Member Becerra. All right, now we're going to go to the next one requested, item number seven, Member Gomez.
Yes, where can the council receive a detailed view of the sources of energy purchased by the city to power city-eligible district zones? And I'm thinking Foxborough and SCLA.
Well, I know this document is really intended to do that. In fact, one of the pages speaks to the two different sources of power. One is largely unspecified, but then the other is a small amount of hydro. That's actually found on page eight-fifty-five. And in that, you'll get an illustration of where our power is coming from now. It'll all effectively go to our two service areas, Foxborough or SCLA. The unspecified, we can't characterize exactly what source that comes from as it's bought through the grid. But one of the things that you can look forward to seeing over the course of the next few years, certainly over the next twelve months, you should see a change in this. But that unspecified, where it says ninety-five point eight percent, one of our goals and responsibilities is to reduce that number dramatically. And so what you will see with two contracts that we have entered into, you will see a large amount of that ninety-five point eight percent shift to renewable, particularly on the solar and on the wind, because we have two contracts in place that are awaiting the completion of two renewable plants. So that gives you a good breakdown, the best breakdown that we have available as to our current sourcing of electric power.
And the next question is just a combination for seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Are those the marijuana case settlements in the city of Victorville?
Yes.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Member Gomez. All right, with that said, the chair invites a motion from the council and the council sitting in its various capacities.
Madam Mayor, motion to approve seventeen, nineteen through four, four through nineteen.
There you go. Thank you, Member Becerra. Is there a second? Thank you. I understand that. I do that often. All right, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Becerra.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Irving.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. We're now going to move on to our next business in order, which is written communications, beginning with item number twenty. This is the request to approve an award for unarmed security guard services under Project CC twenty-two dash one-one-one. Mr. Metzler, will you tee up the item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. We do require at a number of our facilities, including here at City Hall, unarmed security services to help interface with the public. And the current provider is under a contract that effectively is going to expire if it hasn't already expired. And because of that, we've actually underwent a public bidding process where we've actually invited bidders to bid on these services. And so we've completed that process, and this item brings forward a recommendation resulting from that public solicitation process. So with that, the author on this item is your finance director, Mr. John Mendiola. He's available for any questions or comments you might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Metzler. Madam Clerk, will you kindly read the recommendation?
That the Honorable City Council, Water District Board of Directors, approve the award to Altech Industries, Inc. in the amount not to exceed amount of nine-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-four dollars.
All right, thank you. Moving on to technical questions for clarification as it relates specifically to the staff report and more pointedly to the approval of the award. We're going to begin with Member Becerra.
Thank you. Mr. Mendiola, I know it's probably on here, but I'm looking. Since the security guard is in our building, are we responsible for workman's comp? Or is the company that he works for responsible for workman's comp?
The company they work for is responsible for that.
So just because he's in our building doesn't mean he's our employee. He's not an employee of the city of Victorville, right?
Correct. And we do have their insurance certificates in case anything happens.
No, I just wanted to make sure, just because you walk into this building, doesn't mean you're an employee.
Correct.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Member Becerra. Member Gomez?
Are the hours for surveillance determined by the hours of operations in the facilities?
Yes.
Okay. I was trying to see if I found that within the scope of services, but that didn't answer my question. So my next follow-up question would be, if we're not in service or we're not during hours of operation, we will not have the services of this particular individual or this company, right?
That is correct.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Member Gomez. Mayor Protam? Thank you. And the chair has none. And so moving on from those questions, the chair invites a motion from the city council and the Victorville Water District Board of Directors.
I'd like to make that motion as recommended by staff.
To adopt the staff's recommendation? Yes. All right, thank you. We have a first. Is there a second? Thank you. We have a first by Member Gomez, a second by Mayor Protam Irving. Discussion on the pending motion, Member Gomez.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protam.
No, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Member Becerra. Thank you. Thank you. And the chair has no discussion on the motion, closes the discussion period. Madam Clerk, the vote, please.
Councilmember Becerra.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Irving.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So the city council and the Victorville Water District Board of Directors has taken action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda. Moving on to item number twenty-one, this is the city website support agreement and migration to cloud-hosted services. Mr. Metzler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This effectively extends our relationship with now Granicus, who's a successor to Vision Technology Solutions, effectively to host our website and I guess more importantly, host virtually all of the data in the cloud. And with that, also includes responsibilities by them to work with us for a refresh of the website every five years. So with that, this item has been submitted by your technology officer, Mr. Mazharul Islam. And he's available for any questions or comments you might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Metzler. Madam Clerk?
That the Honorable City Council approve a five-year professional services consulting agreement with Granicus LLC to support and host her public and internal websites in the amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars and that the Honorable City Council authorize the city manager to execute all documents related to this agreement.
Thank you. All right, moving on to technical questions for clarification as it relates to the staff report, beginning with Member Gomez.
Will the city be obtaining online base on the cloud or offline services?
Could have been... It'll be online.
And when taking the summation of years one through five, there's an approximate expense of one-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand. Is that an approximate calculation that will be budgeted for the future years? I do see one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, and it does not seem to be the actual rather an approximate in the report.
So... I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Yeah, so I'm just wanting to make sure the one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, is that annual? Or is that something that's already divvied out within the next years, one through five?
It's divvied out for one through five.
So then one-seventy is for just this year alone?
No, the one-seventy is for the duration of five years.
Thank you. And does the city's content manager system... I know they work differently, but I was wondering if there would be issues with privacy or encryption, or if someone accidentally, you know, hacks or deliberately, intentionally lets information go.
So the... Because it's going to be hosted in cloud, the vendor essentially confirms that they conform to the security standards and to the extent that there is a compromise, that's something that the vendor will be responsible for.
When addressing both sides, what does that refer to? What is both sides?
I'm sorry.
I know. It's within the document, and I thought maybe both sides was referring to offline versus iCloud services when it said both, but I didn't know if that was the case. But if not, you're fine. I'll just go to the next question.
So the both side is referring to the public as well as the Intranet?
Okay, got it. And will the city use a two-step verification process to help protect sensitive data as well as user data?
We are moving towards multi-factor authentications relatively soon. So once that's implemented and to the extent that the vendor supports this technology, then yes.
And what measures are in place if data sets from a device get lost or stolen? Is Granicus going to be responsible for that as well?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand.
So what measures are in place if data sets, so a data set from a device gets either lost or stolen? Granicus will be responsible for that?
So if the device is stolen and the data is compromised, then the vendor is not necessarily responsible per se.
Okay, that was all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gomez. Mayor Protam?
Hi, Mr. Islam. How are you? Good to see you again.
Good to be seen.
Yes, just a quick question because I think I get all this. We're just continuing our relationship with this particular vendor, correct?
That's correct. And the bonus is that the vendor has agreed to host it themselves, so we don't have to host it in-house. And that will enable us to implement the updates seamlessly.
Okay, thank you so much.
You bet.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protam. Member Becerra?
The amount they're going to hold is going to be... How could you say? It doesn't matter how much we give them every year. It's not going to change the price of the cost of the contract?
That's correct.
So we add maybe a bigger library and we want to start putting everything over there. And we add more computers. It's not going to up the cost because the cloud needs to hold more.
Not as long as the scope remains the same, and it doesn't matter how we scale this up based on our growth.
Okay. All right, that's it. No further questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Member Becerra. And the chair has no questions on the staff report and invites a motion from the council.
Motion to approve staff's recommendation?
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. We have a first and a second. Discussion on the pending motion, Member Becerra.
No discussion. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Protam.
No, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Member Gomez.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the chair has none and closes the discussion period. Madam Clerk, the vote, please.
Councilmember Becerra.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Irving.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So the council has adopted staff's recommendation on that item. And moving on to item number twenty-two, this is the final approval of tract map number twenty-two-seven-five. Mr. Metzler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Tentative tract two-zero-two-seven-five is actually proceeding from its tentative stage to effectively a final stage. And with the action of the council tonight, it actually takes this tentative map into a final. The site is located at the southwest corner of Luna and Montevista. It's one-hundred-and-thirty-five, a single-family lots. So with that, the author on this item is your city engineer, Mr. Brian Gangler. He's available for any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Metzler. Madam Clerk, the recommendation, please.
That the Honorable City Council approve final tract map number two-zero-two-seven-five, approve the subdivision improvement agreement with KB Homes for final tract map number two-zero-two-seven-five, and approve the lien agreement with KB Homes as the improvement security.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to questions for clarification. We're going to begin with Mayor Protam.
Mr. Gangler, you can answer from where you're sitting. This is pretty standard, correct? To approve the lien agreements between particular developers when we accept the final tract?
Yes, this is fairly routine. It's not... It's pretty common for a developer to... They would start off with the security being a lien if they're not going to develop the property immediately.
Right. So for laymen or for a person like me, can you just speak that, expand upon that in layman terms, real simple?
Sure. So you may recall that some kind of security is required for the public improvements on a residential tract.
Correct.
One of those forms of security can be a lien placed on the property. One of those forms of security can be a lien placed on the property. And so that can in essence be a placeholder until they actually want to start pulling permits to construct the improvements and build homes. And at that time, they can substitute the security with something like a bond instead of a lien.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Sure. Thank you. All right. Member Becerra.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gomez.
Yes. For the recordation of the map, is that set for two years?
I'm not aware of it. There may be a timeframe for a time limit on when the map needs to be recorded. But off the top of my head, I'm not sure what that timeframe is. Typically, they'd be identified in the lien agreement. Is there a term in the lien agreement? That's what I'm scrolling for, Brian. I would, I'm not sure. I would have to look that up.
My next question is, I presume that the municipal code section announced in this item that it comports with the California State Subdivision Map Act, SMA. Is that so?
Yes, this is consistent with that code section.
And what logic merits that it would not be in the public interest to require the installation of improvement required by the subdivision improvement agreement sooner than two years of the recordation of the map?
Well, that would apply in this case because there is no need for those public improvements to proceed within that timeframe. There's no immediate need.
So the way I understood it is before the two years, we're not going to do anything. It must be recorded before we can proceed with the improvements. And so I'm asking in that regard?
Yeah. So typically, in a final map approval like this, the, there is the approval of a subdivision improvement agreement along with that, security, the recordation of the final map, all those things go together.
Okay. So when can the city expect to see the required improvements come to fruition?
That is really a developer-driven timeframe. So it's largely dependent on when the developer decides to move forward with a project.
What is the average square footage of these parcel and tract map?
Okay, Member Gomez, the Chair has offered a lot of leniency. This is really going beyond the scope of this agenda item. So the Chair is going to ask you to bring yourself in line with the purpose of this agenda item.
What is the typical procedural timeline that the subdivider passes through before the city sees the completion of that subdivision improvement? Is, in other words, I foresee seeing that notice of completion, but I just don't know when to expect it.
Well, that timeframe can vary widely. It's largely dependent on when the developer moves forward with the improvement. And it could be within a very short timeframe or it could be a very long timeframe, depending on when they move forward.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Sure. Thank you, Member Gomez.
You're welcome.
The Chair has none and invites a motion from the Council.
Motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. We have a first and a second. Discussion on the pending motion, Member Becerra. Thank you, Mayor Protam. Thank you, Member Gomez.
Yes. Some of my questions are within the scope, but I understand that sometimes my brain is not in someone else's. So I appreciate hearing your comments so I can try to explain what I'm trying to.
I appreciate that, Member Gomez, but we're talking about the pending motion. Did you have anything on the pending?
Yeah, that's pertinent to the pending motion.
It wasn't. All right. So with that said, the Chair has no comments on the pending motion. Closes the discussion period. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Becerra.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Irving.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. So the Council has adopted staff's recommendation on item number twenty-two. Moving on to item number twenty-three, this is the Miscellaneous Engineering Services Agreement with Woodard and Curran. Mr. Metzler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the Council. This item effectively extends a relationship already existing and that has been existing relative to the operations of our wastewater treatment plant. This item deals with a scope of work, a flexible scope of work that is really outside the core operating or operations agreement we have with Woodard-Curran. And very commonly throughout the course of a year, outside of our core services and operations requirements that Woodard-Curran performs at the plant, there is a need for additional work to be done. And so this type of a contract, this miscellaneous form engineering services contract has effectively given us the flexibility to have Woodard-Curran take on additional tasks that are outside the operating contract scope. So with that, the author on this item is your city engineer, Mr. Brian Gangler. He's available for any questions or comments you might have.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Metzler. Madam Clerk, will you kindly read the recommendation?
That the Honorable Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve the consultant professional services provider agreement with Woodard and Curran in an amount not to exceed $150,000 for performing miscellaneous engineering and consulting services for the city of Victorville Industrial Wastewater Treatment Plant.
All right. Thank you very much. And technical questions for clarification as it relates to the staff report, Member Becerra.
Mr. Metzler, in regards to our wastewater treatment plant, are we running at full capacity yet out there?
We are back at full capacity. We were diverting for a little while because of some MBR issues, the larger MBR replacement project, but that's now complete. So we're back to normal.
Thank you very much, sir. No further questions. Thank you, ma'am.
Yep. Member Gomez.
Are the items such as this one considered part of the capital improvement program, a general plan revision, maintenance and operation request? Where does this fall under?
It doesn't fall under any of those that you just identified. This is very specifically a separate professional services contract for work that's incidental to the core work of operating the plant.
And is this item under the wastewater treatment facility that's housed under the Water Forward District?
Under the city's water district, yes.
And is, did staff consider putting the consultant services under a point system threshold that we've seen formally in this particular day?
No, that point system that I think you're speaking to is similar to likely what you saw in twenty is when you actually go out for public solicitation, go through a ranking and scoring process. That's not a process that was followed here largely because of the technical nature of work, experience and knowledge gained by Woodard-Curran, not only dating back to when they actually designed the plant, but when they effectively came on to operate the plant after it was constructed. So it would make little sense at this point for us to consider anybody expert other than Woodard-Curran to undertake these types of works.
And is the IWWTP in the city of Adelanto or is it just within the sphere of influence of Victorville?
The IWWTP is located in the city of Victorville, north and east of the Southern California Logistics Airport.
So that's two-zero-zero-eight-zero Hellendale Road in Victorville? Because I read the letter and when I looked it up, Adelanto came, so I just was making sure that it was in Victorville.
I can tell you for sure that the plant is located in Victorville.
Okay, thank you. And is the one-hundred-and-fifty an annual budget item that we're looking at today that could change in the future?
We don't expect it to change, but that's effectively the fiscal impact that this item would bring if the Council approves it.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Member Gomez. Mayor Protam.
No, thank you.
Thank you. And I just have a quick question, Mr. Metzler, and I'm just, it's somewhat rhetorical, I suppose. But the treatment of industrial wastewater is a completely different ballgame than what we deal with, VVWR-A. This requires a lot greater skill and savvy to run this kind of a plant. Is that fair?
That is fair. The plant that we have has two sides to it. One side that will treat effluent similar to VVWA, which is what we would characterize as domestic waste. But the industrial waste does require a separate and distinct treatment process that has to occur before it even gets commingled with domestic effluent.
In fact, we built this particularly because it had, in and of itself, has different demands.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Metzler. All right. With that said, the Chair invites a motion from the Victorville Water District Board of Directors.
Motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first by Member Becerra, second by Member Gomez. Discussion on the pending motion, Member Becerra. Thank you, Member Gomez.
Yes. So when I mentioned the two-zero-zero-eight-zero Hellendale Road and I looked at Adelanto, I just want to make sure that there is clarity for that, but I guess.
It's discussion on the pending motion, but if it's serious enough, you can certainly ask the question.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam. Thank you. And the Chair has no comments on the pending motion. Closes the discussion period. Madam Clerk, the vote, please.
Councilmember Becerra. Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Irving.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you. So the Victorville Water District Board of Directors has taken action in accordance with the recommendations set forth on the agenda. Moving on to item number twenty-four, this is the Sheriff's Department Schedule A Amendment. Mr. Metzler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the Council. We operate, or I'm sorry, our relationship with the San Bernardino County Sheriff annually is memorialized via what's commonly referred to as Schedule A to an MOU with the Sheriff's Office. And this year, we do have Schedule A in place, which effectively identifies our level of service, which currently is pegged at almost one-hundred-and-forty-six, I'm sorry, one-hundred-and-forty-seven sworn in general support staff to make the contract work. Shortly after we approved the current Schedule A, there was a meet and confer amongst labor for the sheriffs, for the sheriff in the county of San Bernardino. And that meet and confer actually yielded salary increases to law enforcement across the entire sheriff's department for a number of reasons, which are actually outlined in the staff report. So with that, the existing agreement we do have actually provides for the county to make changes to the costs at their, effectively at their discretion. The only real reason this item is being brought to this council is attention is the need for an additional appropriation to actually satisfy the salary increases that were effectively passed on through to the sheriff. There are no additions in the number of bodies under this action. So with that, as the author, I'm available for any questions or comments you might have. I've also got Captain Wickham here that can help answer questions. And Mr. Tony Camargo, who's been my point interface with the Sheriff's Department, is available as well for any questions or comments you might have.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, the recommendation.
That the Honorable City Council approve the amended Schedule A contract for fiscal year 2022-2023 for law enforcement services with the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department and adopt Resolution twenty-two-zero-eight-six approving an additional appropriation in the amount of $750,898 for such agreement.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Before we get into questions for clarification, as we have three potential people to ask questions of, as per our policy, we're going to go ahead and pass them to Mr. Metzler. Mr. Metzler, if you think there's someone else that can better deal with it, please feel free to so designate. We're going to begin with Member Gomez on this item.
For the last five amendments, there has been an increase of approximately two percent to the SBC sheriffs. Is that correct?
No, that's not exactly correct. I believe that's the number that we had realized as a part of this budget approval. But in prior years, we were budgeting five to six percent increase. And that was reflective from our understanding of what's contained in the labor agreement with the county and SEBA.
So next year, we're going to see a three percent, all right?
It's not exactly known at this time. I would actually expect it to be closer to where we were expecting it this last year, closer to the five or six percent.
And the city plans to delve into this city reserves to appropriate for item twenty-four. Is that my correct understanding based on the submission of the report?
The cash does have to come somewhere and we would identify that cash is coming from unencumbered fund balance of both the general fund or Measure P. Saying it differently, that's available cash in those two funds.
Okay. Were there any city administrators available during the negotiations? Or was anyone from the city able to provide input as to the MOU modifications?
No.
Does the MOU include court personnel from the Sheriff's Department? So anything that the sheriff might be doing?
I can't answer that and don't, I don't have an answer to that because the question doesn't exactly pertain to what's included in our MOU and Schedule A. We wouldn't pay for court personnel or identify court personnel under our Schedule A.
Have discussions ensued related to overtime mitigation and officer fatigue on job-relatedness for compensation?
That's something I can't speak to, but maybe Captain Wickham, if you're familiar with that, perhaps Captain Wickham can. Again, those conversations, those negotiations are effectively between the county and SEBA.
Yes, our Sheriff's Employee Benefit Association negotiated with the county for retention, specifically longevity retention and some other items to retain our personnel with the department. And so they came to this increase.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Member Gomez. Mayor Protam.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to say as a municipality, I think it's very necessary that we pay to be safe or at least pay to keep our citizens safe. And it's important that our citizenry, that they feel safe. However, and I also want to say, after reading the staff report, that I noted that the sheriff helped to reduce some of the increases or tried to. I want to say thank you, you know, for that effort. But I guess I have a concern, even in light of Measure P, are we going to be able to keep up with the cost as a municipality? And I guess the only person that can really answer that is Mr. Metzler. I have a concern. I'm looking for assurance, for reassurance. Because as we move forward, I know the cost has gone up for law enforcement. I know, I noted that for our deputies, they're probably at the lower end of the pay scale. But as we move forward, I have that. That's a concern.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the Council. I think it's a very fair concern. It's a similarly-natured concern staff has. And in fact, that's why we focus so heavily as a part of our budget process to actually cash flow our general fund and our Measure P, specifically in this case, to be able to project and foresee whether or not we can keep up. And of course, even if we can keep up, what does that mean for increasing service levels? And in fact, that was really a genesis to starting the process for Measure P in the first place, that same concern, which was when we started pursuing Measure P. Before we did so, one of the things that we were very much aware of was the basic fact that then the costs were outpacing revenue growth. Now, over the last few years, we've had some good revenue growth years. We've had some very nice surprises in revenue growth to where our revenue growth has outpaced the expenditures. However, I just don't think it's easy to believe that that's going to continue to last for a long time. I mean, there's a lot of talk about a real recession in our near future. And we don't know how that would impact us. We don't know necessarily if we'd have to make adjustments. We do believe based upon the cash position that we shared with you and the projections, we're actually fairly healthy right now. And we could probably sustain for a period of time any corrections in the market with respect to the economy. But to be able to say that we're actually going to keep up with it, it's really hard and difficult to project that. I think the most we can do- and difficult to, to project that. I think the most we can do is continue, uh, cash flowing the way we have been. Um, and, and, and with that, um, obviously using that as the broader to figure out, can we keep up and can we add, uh, services at the same time?
Okay, well, thank you for the very candid response. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Member Becerra.
Mr. Metzler, is there any chance that we're going to get our motor officers back? I know it'll expand our contract, but those guys buzz in and out of traffic.
Yeah, the, the traffic enforcement, I remember, was, was, uh, a, a unique, um, service, uh, for our community. Um, I'll tell you this, um, motors are not on my radar, uh, and is not on our radar, uh, as a service response, um, in the city of Victorville.
Thank you. No further questions. Thank you, Madam.
Yes, thank you, member Becerra. So, Mr. Metzler, just going back to the days when we talked about, um, when we, when we had a comprehensive public safety plan brought before us, it was very clear that we were, uh, woefully behind the public safety curve. We all saw that, and, and hence the need to expand public safety and, law enforcement, fire, animal care and control, um, and so forth. So, um, I'm trying to understand how we use Measure P to not expand, but to pay for increasing costs. Can you help me with that?
Can you say that last part again?
Sure. So the intent of, of Measure P was really to expand, um, public safety, part of it. Most of it was to expand public safety such that we, um, would not, would bring ourself current and prepare ourselves for, um, increasing populations, to make sure that we can handle service calls and improve response times. And so, i- is, at my last count, we're still due to bring on at least nineteen additional, uh, law enforcement officials, and I'm, I'm wondering how we get to the place where we use Measure P money to, deal with increasing costs rather than expanding personnel. And I know, I, I know it all, it all runs together a bit, but if you could help me understand that, I'd appreciate it.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Um, so first, I think the overarching vision, um, as I recall it and, um, helped craft it, uh, was when we, um, presented Measure P, it was to effectively, uh, change our service model for public safety, whether it's police, uh, fire, um, animal control or code enforcement to be less reactive, uh, and more proactive. And, um, we, we did study, uh, where our service model was and where we, uh, we can tell you where we are now, uh, to where we, uh, have in fact gotten more proactive. Uh, there were measures in there using staffing models to suggest, uh, where we, uh, can be to, to have the best chance of, uh, being totally, um, uh, proactive, uh, on all, on across, uh, all service levels. Um, but I think to answer the question as to how Measure P can be used to pay for the increases in cost, I think one of the best analogies, uh, I can give, and it's actually baked into, the cash flows we have for the general plan. Um, and that's actually requiring, uh, I'm sorry, the general plan, the general fund. And that's actually, uh, requiring Measure P to, uh, effectively pick up, uh, some of the inflationary costs, um, that were, that, that are being realized for the baseline services. One of the things that we just talked about, which was real when we studied, was the recognition that, um, the cost of service outpaces the, uh, revenue growth. And one of the things that we baked into the models is trying to set up, a service model to where, um, we're not hiring, a number of, say, deputies in this particular case under Measure P, perhaps because Measure P, has a fresh start, uh, and doesn't have any cost for, um, uh, new bodies. Have it continue to pay for the new bodies hired under Measure P, but at, at the detriment of the general fund, to where you effectively have to cut, uh, the number of deputies under, um, un- under, under that that's being funded from the general fund. So, um, you absolutely have to, if you're, if you're going to be successful creating some kind of balance, uh, in, in personnel going forward for, uh, for, for police, you have to have a balance and, and see it, um, much more holistically, um, so that one fund isn't harming the other, if that makes sense.
It makes a lot of sense, and, and that, that's part of the reason for the question. I just want to make sure that, um, and it's certainly been the intent of this council always, it, um, to, um, have that proper fidelity to the intent, the original intent of, uh, Measure P, and, and part of that certainly is to expand, um, um, public safety, and it, and it's, you know, it's going to be interesting to see how it, how it plays out with the economy, looking the way it is. So, um, just want you to know, I'm going to always be, pushing for that because that's what you wanted, but I, I'm hoping that we don't get to a place where it become, we get, we find ourselves in the same position that we were in before.
Yeah, I, I do appreciate that, and, and just maybe for the benefit of, of the public, um, because I think what I shared with you is easy to, to, to be gotten and understood by this council, because we've been living and breathing it, uh, in the weeds for some time. Um, but effectively, the way we're structured right now, we have two funds. We'll just focus on police for two seconds. We have two funds that, that fund our, our police costs, the general fund and, and Measure P. And before we had Measure P, if you forget Measure P for two seconds, under the general fund, let's just say, and don't quote me on this number, um, but out of the general fund, uh, we were funding, say, a hundred deputies. Um, and if, for example, let's say because Measure P passed, everybody's celebrating, we decided to go out and hire those thirty deputies, um, because that's what we used in some of the visioning, uh, to, to ultimately, uh, change the direction of, um, uh, our responsiveness from being, uh, reactive to proactive. We went ahead and hired those thirty deputies. Um, Measure P probably could afford it. Um, but what was missing was the revenue growth, to at least cover those hundred deputies under the general fund. And so realizing, or, or expecting the, the, the reality in that, uh, the cost for the service is outpacing the revenue, you're effectively going to be harming the general fund if we, and so that's why there was some balance when we came out of the gate with this, and we only, we only put eleven bodies on, on the police force. Um, we believe, uh, we, we chose eleven bodies for, for two reasons. One, we believed that's what we can reasonably come out of the gate with, afford and sustain for some time. We also do have physical constraints, and we've thought about that before, in that, uh, before we hire any more bodies, we have to have places to put them.
Yep, that was, that was the next question you already anticipated, that. So, all right, so with, uh, that said, the chair invites a motion from the council.
Madam Mayor, motion to approve staff recommendation.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you ever first by member Becerra, second by Mayor Protem Irving. Discussion on the pending motion, member Becerra. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, member Gomez.
No.
Thank you, and the chair has none, closes the discussion, and Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Becerra. Councilmember Gomez. Mayor Protem Irving. Mayor Jones. Motion passes with councilmember Gomez voting no.
All right, thank you. So, uh, the council has adopted staff recommendation as set forth on the agenda for item twenty-four. Moving on to item number twenty-five, this is the city council members' proof of residency. And as this is, um, item comes to us as the result of a request by member Becerra, she's going to, um, have, uh, um, a good part to do with this item, but for the moment, I'm going to give it to you, Mr. Metzler, to tee up.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Yes, in response to the direction from the council to put this item on, it has been placed, uh, for your, uh, discussion. We've also included, uh, the pertinent sections of the policy and procedure manual, uh, which are outlined in the staff report to offer guidance as to, uh, what's required, what's expected of council members, and, and of course, um, what our results have been and levels of cooperation have been, as we've been attempting to administer, uh, this policy.
All right, thank you. Uh, with that said, member Becerra, would you like to further introduce the item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a couple of questions for our city clerk, or Mr. Metzler, our city clerk who's in charge of our registration for running for office.
Our city clerk, uh, will facilitate elections.
Um, this new upcoming one in November, how was it verified? This one coming in November, now we're going by districts. So we only have two members running, they have to be in those districts, correct?
That's correct.
How was it verified they were in those districts?
That I'll ask the city clerk to, to speak to.
We actually check with the registrar of voters. We give them the information and address provided, and then they provide confirmation that that person, does that, that, that is registered, voted at that address, and that's within that jurisdiction.
Okay, so we are allowed to ask where you live here in the city and provide proof, correct?
We're asked, we're allowed to do that, yes, and the registrar of order, voters confirms the, the accuracy of that information.
Thank you, and what I noticed is that not, not all members sitting on council has proceeded that, correct?
As it relates to the item in front of us, pursuant to our council policy manual, we've requested proof of residency in specific forms, and we have some members that have provided that information and some members that have not.
Okay. I'll make a motion after the other council members are allowed to ask questions.
Sure, all right, very good. Um, so, member Gomez, do you have any questions?
Yes, so it was just, so it was just stated that some members provided information and some members didn't. But yet, um, for the nomination papers, there was a verification, so, it almost seems like, and you can correct me, if that's not the correct understanding, that in order for, the requirement to be fronted or to be available, to be required and fulfilled, the ROV's office was contacted, not the response from, the individuals that responded to this email.
Would you like me to take that?
Yes, please.
So when it comes to elections, we check with the registrar of voters relative to whether they're a registered voter, and they live within the jurisdictional boundaries of the district that they're running for currently. When it comes to the council policy for proof of residency, we reach out to the council members to provide that proof that they reside within the city of Victorville. At this point in time, because each council member isn't an at-large member, the jurisdictional boundaries of the districts do not come into play.
So if the, the boundaries don't go, come into play, why would you need to verify members who are running in a district?
This is our first district election.
So it does matter?
It will matter for this upcoming election only, but for you guys currently, you are not in districts.
Madam Mayor, if I might, I think, I think, I think we're confusing two, two issues. Uh, the district election, uh, and residency within that is a completely separate subject from what this item is, is really focused on or speaking to. This item is focused on our, uh, council body, the elected members, and the requirement of a policy manual that, on an annual basis, the council members affirm their residency, uh, to the city clerk's office. Um, I think the genesis for this was some surprise that existed, when, um, it was found that we did not, um, verify residences of council members in the past, uh, never were required to or, or asked to, but certainly we had an issue a couple of years ago where, um, to our surprise, uh, we had, uh, a council member, uh, sitting on this dais that was not, a resident of the city of Victorville, which, um, I would say we have, an obligation to, uh, and that's why we put this policy together, uh, because state law requires for elected sitting on this council to be actual residents. If you're effectively not, um, the, the law was clear to us in the last instance, and is still clear to us, in the sense that the council member automatically relinquishes that seat if, uh, residency cannot be proved. Uh, so to avoid the potential where the council is facing that, that, that very, uh, unpleasant decision, um, uh, that we had already done once before, uh, the council did ask us to, uh, amend the policy manual, and it was approved, to at least put a process in place where we can get out in front of it before it does become an issue. And so, uh, what this item is really about is we have done that. There's one member particularly, that has not complied with that. All the other members have in fact provided, um, the, uh, proof of residency, and all that's being asked for, is the one member to, uh, provide that proof of residency to satisfy this policy manual, and to make sure that we don't have, uh, an issue of the past where we've got to declare another vacancy on the council.
So, uh, if the law also does state that if there's a challenge to the seat of an elected official, you file a quo warranto with Robert Bonta's office. That was not done formally with Rita Ramirez, and because that's what the law does state, uh, can we rely on local agency powers and limitations to say that police powers under the charter, would supersede state law?
Well, I think your characterization isn't entirely accurate, and, and certainly I'll ask the city attorney to, to correct anything, um, that I say that's misguided or out of place. Um, but my recollection of, of the history and the law as it exists is that the law as it's written is fairly matter-of-fact that, if you are not a resident of the jurisdiction in which you're sitting on the council, you automatically, the law automatically presumes you to be, uh, uh, not, uh, uh, an elected, effectively, uh, causing a vacation of your seat. The quo warranto process is something an affected, uh, can file with the Attorney General's Office to basically, uh, get a, uh, an adjudication of, of the question about whether or not, uh, the, the seat has been vacated, so slightly different than, uh, the way you articulated. That's my understanding, Mr. City Attorney. Do you understand it differently?
You, uh, you have done my job perfectly well. That is excellent, uh, interpretation of how it works.
So based on government code section seventeen seventy, it does provide a number of ways that a seat can be expired. And it also talks about residency. If the council member moves his or her place of residence outside the city limits or seizes, to be an elector, his or her office immediately becomes vacant, vacated. Government Code Section thirty-six five oh two sub A, Government Section thirty-four, three four eight eight seven provides similar requirements for eligibility to hold office for council members. But if you go on, um, this is the twenty-seven page, from the California's Liga Cities called City Council Qualifications, Vacancy, Incompatible Offices and Compensation, um, from one of the attorneys, it does say what you need to do before you cast a vote, like you would want to cast last time. You would have to have facts, and legal standing to be able, to be able to do that. Unfortunately, Rita couldn't walk in and try to sit down, but I can. So I don't know what you would need, but if you definitely need a voter card or something, that's something that's available.
Protem Irving, do you have any questions?
Uh, yes, um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Mr. City Attorney, can you tell me specifically what is section, two, four, three, and two, four, four, the government code say explicitly?
Those are just very simple sections that say that basically you have to be a resident of the city you're in.
Uh, when you're in that.
Yes.
Okay, and I know that we are relying up on, um, the City Policy and Procedure Manual, Chapter Two, uh, appears, Section Four, A. Um, it, but what I see is that this particular policy manual does, uh, procedure, does not, uh, explicitly state what the consequences are if a council person does not comply. It appears that it's silent on that, on this issue. Um, and so I guess to cut through the chase, I, I need to understand, um, do we have any evidence, uh, outside of, of Ms. Gomez not complying with the policy? Is there evidence? Or why are we having?
Well, okay, so, yeah, I, I'm going, yeah, no, I'm good, I'm good. Right, so this has gone beyond really what I think the intent of this item was. This is, this was first and foremost to request a report, um, as to, um, whether, whether or not all council members had complied with our policy to provide proof of residency. It's just an annual kind of thing. It's a very simple thing to do. No one's making any allegations that someone lives here or doesn't live there. There's no talk about any kind of court, anything like that. But Mayor Protem is accurate. Our policy manual, um, is, and unfortunately, not as explicit as it could be in those regards. Um, certainly in terms of, um, when the information is due and what consequences, if any, um, there might be for someone not, or someone failing, um, to follow, follow our policy in that regard. So, there's no discussion here for the purposes of this agenda item at all, and I don't think it was the intent, um, and, for anyone to suggest that someone isn't worthy to sit on this council at this time.
Well, can't we just simply ask, um, Councilwoman Gomez to provide her proof to be in compliance with the policy?
Yeah, I can, I could provide my, there's three selections here. There's three things that are being asked of. It almost makes it.
Mayor Protem Irving, hold on, we're going to have a to and fro here. So, um, Mayor Protem, you still have the floor, and you're free to ask additional questions.
Yes, I'm just simply saying that, um, a rental agreement, um, utility bill. uh, is there a reason why you did not comply with?
Mayor Portem, you're not gonna have a conversation.
The policy doesn't say how to.
Gomez has not been recognized by the chair, so hold on a moment. So at this point, Mayor Portem, if you don't have any additional questions, I'm gonna, I'm going to.
I do have two questions.
Go ahead.
Being answered. Number one, can we as a council ask her to comply? Number two, and when she complies with, uh, we give her a timeframe to comply. And, and number two, you know, is there a reason why she can't?
Sure. Yes, and so, um.
So that would be a question that we, we answer amongst ourselves or legal counsel. And secondly, if she, if, if we ask her to do so, she can only answer whether she can or she can, and we have to decide whether or not that's a good enough reason to not comply with our policy. Thank you.
Right, and I, and I get it, so, so hold on a second. We're, we're, we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, but I understand the spirit of all of that, the excellent questions. Mr. Deeportnowski.
Mr. Mayor Jones, if I might, I think part of the problem here is that there's not a lot of specificity in our policy manual. If you look at some other cities, they have a far more robust provision regarding the need to provide adequate evidence of residency to ensure that in fact the council members are in fact residents of the community or the district, depending on if we're in a district situation. And then what a lot of those more robust provisions do provide is, in the event the person does not provide the, the information requested that's in the policy, uh, at that point, the city would have the option of then passing that information on to this district attorney who would have jurisdiction over the matter to determine whether or not that council person actually should be in that seat. So I think, you know, one of the, one of the issues perhaps is to look at the policy manual and make it far more robust with respect to these other criteria and then these other consequences, should you not be willing to comply with that criteria. That way, I think, right now, I think part of the frustration is the policy manual doesn't address the consequences and, and isn't that specific. It's basically a policy manual that says you need to do it, and then it's given to the city clerk to, to basically um, monitor it.
Alright, thank you, and so, um, with that said, I just um, have a question then, um, Mr. Deeportnowski. So, given, and I, I've listened very carefully to everything that's been said. Um, excellent questions, but we have um, as um, a city also a moral and ethical obligation to make sure that we're protecting all of our citizens and our residents, that they're actually being represented by someone that lives in the city. And at this, in this case, we're talking, you know, two seats are still at large and two are gonna become, um, excuse me, three seats at large and two are gonna become by district. But certainly, um, um, do we not have a duty to our public?
I, I think we certainly do, and I think if the issue becomes perhaps even more important when we go to districts, because then that person's gonna have to live within a much smaller area and be able to provide evidence of that to ensure that they are rightfully elected to that seat and should hold that seat. And again, I think, you know, one of the options here would be to look at the policy manual and, and make it a little more robust with respect to those requirements and, and the consequences should you not comply.
Okay, and um, it, it, I mean, it just sounds to me that our policy manual has thus far been reasonable and only asking for verification once a year. Is that your experience?
It has assumed that the council members would comply with the requests.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so that um, concludes my questions. I'm now going to hand this over to um, Member Becerra. Uh, if you'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for Mr. Metzler to get with our city attorney to make our policy more robust. Let's figure out exactly what's needed, whether it be a utility bill or a rental agreement. Um, and the consequences of not supplying those when asked by the city clerk in an email without the excuse of I never got it. I would like that to us by the first meeting of October, so we can vote on it by the second meeting of October, so it can be in place by the time the voting happens November fourth.
I second that. Alright, so we have a first and a second, um, Member Becerra, did you want to make any discussion on your motion?
No discussion.
Thank you.
Just for clarification.
Sure.
So we're gonna revise the policy.
That's the motion.
To include consequences if, if a council person does not comply.
Yes, ma'am.
And those consequences will be.
It, that's gonna be.
And I'd like to make a substitute motion on that.
Thank you.
So my motion includes the verbiage that the member brought on the motion, but it needs to include a wide variety of California acceptable forms of um, proving such an item, not just the three little things that were posted there. It needs to be more vast, whether it's one or two, it doesn't matter, but you can't just lock it in. So that's my substitute motion. No, it's not an argument, I was explaining.
It's not, it's not a, it's not. The chair is going to rule this way. Um, I believe that, that the motion as it, it stands by Member Becerra sufficiently covered that area.
Yes, but there, there's a motion on the floor, so you can vote it down, I'm just adding to that suggestion.
I'm, I'm calling the motion out of order, and you can, and that's the chair's ruling, you can appeal it if you wish.
So how would you like me to appeal it?
Uh, using the, the appeal procedures.
Okay, so I'd like to appeal your.
Okay, so state, state the base statement. So you need to state the basis under which the chair's ruling was inaccurate.
It's inaccurate because I'm placing a second motion that would stand in preference.
The chair has not, the chair has not, um, in that regard, has not breached policy. The chair has the authority to rule certain motions out of order, that is an out of order motion, as it was sufficiently covered in the main motion.
Can you tell me how it's out of order? What, what's the sustainability of that law or that act?
Okay, Member Gomez.
Perfect, you have no clue. Thank you.
Member Gomez is, is quite mistaken.
Anyways, that was for the audience to kind of watch what I was trying.
So Member Gomez is out of order and will suspend, Member Gomez does not facilitate this meeting. Would you like the appeal to go forward?
Didn't I make that clear?
Um, that the chair, the chair.
Are you gonna ask the same chair, it's out of order, so what would you do, jump through?
Member Gomez is conflating two issues. The chair ruled that the um, substitute motion out of order, the member was given the opportunity to appeal.
And I did, did you put it on a motion?
For a moment, so that we can do.
You just know it's not gonna go.
So with that said, the question is, shall the ruling of the chair be sustained? Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Councilmember Becerra?
Your ruling of overriding her.
Yes.
Yes.
Exactly. Councilmember Gomez?
Agree with what she's saying. I'm confused.
Mayor Portem Irving.
Okay, so the appeal is, is um, Member Gomez appealed from the ruling of the chair that said that the substitute motion was out of order. We both stated our reasons, the question now before the council is, shall the ruling of the chair um, be sustained, shall it be upheld?
We're not voting on the original.
Correct.
Okay.
This is just on the appeal.
So Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Agree with anything Jones has stated.
Mayor Portem Irving?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
And I'd like to say why.
No, no, we're not, we're not gonna do that, so, um, the, the, the ruling of the chair. Okay, hold on, the ruling of the chair stands, the substitute motion is out of order. We'll move on to the main motion in just a moment, Mr. Metzler.
Uh, if, 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 okay with the mayor, I'd like to speak to the first motion and give perspective of staff uh, as it relates to a recommendation you're deliberating that, that staff hasn't yet um, um, offered any uh, opinion to.
Sure.
Um, so I, I certainly don't believe it's necessary at this point in time. I certainly wouldn't advise trying to make uh, this section of your policy manual uh, more robust. And in fact, recalling the intent, it was intended originally to be as constructive as possible to provide any council member with the opportunity um, for him or herself to uh, prove their residency um, on, on a regular basis, so as to avoid um, the, the, the exercise that we went through last time to where the issue of, of whether or not the seat is declared vacant um, is, is, is the only action for this council uh, to consider. Um, it was intended to be deliberative, um, and, and that being said, the way the law, I understand the law to be written is if any council member on, on this dais uh, does not have residency, th- that seat is automatically deemed by law to be vacant. There is no action uh, for this council really to take other than perhaps belt and suspenders to, to make the declaration that uh, it has been vacated. Uh, but the law in and of itself uh, vacates the seat. Uh, so, so with that, I don't know necessarily that there's any, certainly from staff's perspective. Council may have a different perspective, uh, it's your policy manual. Um, but we certainly don't believe as staff that there's any value in trying to include something more robust to identify what happens next if, if you, if you don't comply. I think it's fairly straightforward from our perspective that if you don't comply, the count, the, 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 the real question for the councils is for it to decide what it wants to do. Does it want to ask that individual question, hey, do you intend to comply? Or if you don't, then maybe we need to look deeper to see if uh, there's anything that can prove uh, residence, residency has been abandoned. Um, but the policy manual, I think, is, 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 is a side uh, conversation to, to the real issue.
Thank you, Mr. Metzler.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Um, before we move on, I'd just like to say I'm all about decorum. But I, um, I take issue with you silently. I'm a member of the council, I'm your colleague.
Sure.
And at the end of the day, my vote counts, one man, one vote. And so if I wanted to speak, I think you should have allowed me to speak, but what you did was you told me we're not gonna talk about that and then you gave the floor to Mr. Metzler. I think that that is, um, unprofessional.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Hasn't finished.
Yo, certainly.
Thing that I want to know is, um, with regard to when someone moves, I do understand that they become ineligible to hold a seat if they've been elected, because, you know, it's about taxation and representation. But what is, what law are you referring to that I, that the person automatically vacates the seat? Don't you have to prove that, uh, Mr. Metzler? It does, doesn't have to be proven in some way, form, or fashion?
That, that is ultimately what the council did when it declared uh, the seat vacant. Um, but just by the, and I don't have the, the actual law in front of me, um, maybe uh, the city attorney can um, can, can um, identify which one it is. But we, we ran into this experience previously where without investigation, the law that's written is if I say, for example, as a council member, if I moved out, I'm, I automatically relinquished my seat. It's just, it's just given in law. Um, the, the act that we took previously was effectively to perfect it. Um, and, and there was evidence uh, used for this council to, to.
Right, I remember the evidence, the evidence was a tax form that stated explicitly that the, the member had declared another place outside of the city of Victorville as their primary residence. And at that time, they were staying in that residence. But I'm saying just an allegation, or let's say someone becomes temporarily displaced or they become homeless. Let's say they're even living on, I don't know, Mojave and Condor in a tent.
Well, then, then let us know.
Right.
In fact, we are aware, in fact, this is something that we studied, but we are aware that your declaration of residency can be the undercrossing at the center of Maine and Maine.
Right, I understand that, but just for my own personal edification, can you, I would like to look at the plain language of the law that you're referring to. Thank you.
Sure, okay, madam. Yes, absolutely, and, and, and the chair is going to respond to the comments made by Mayor Portem. The chair has a responsibility to move these meetings forward in a meaningful way and to make sure that decorum is fall, um, is, is, is upheld and that every member has an equal playing field. And so, to the extent that, you know, that sometimes the chair has to bring us back around to the intent of the agenda item, regardless of who it is, the chair is going to do that, has nothing to do with personalities, and certainly no one should take undue umbrage um, at the chair doing her job. Thank you, so with that, I think, that's not an apology. So, Member Becerra?
Apologize, I said, I'm sorry.
Mayor Portem, you are out of order. And you will, you will, you will suspend, you will suspend, you will bring yourself to order. Member Becerra, um, we have a, um, a motion and a second, and we're now taking discussion on the pending motion. Do you have any comments?
Madam Mayor, I'm asking for a break. If you have a break.
I, I'm not inclined to do that, but I, but I, because we're in the middle, but we, we can do that if it's needed, yes. We will return at seven fifty-nine.
Thank you.
All right, it's seven fifty-nine. We're resuming open session. We're still on item number twenty-five. Member, uh, Becerra, we're um, at the point where we're undertaking discussion on your pending motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any comments on your pending motion? All right, thank you. Uh, Member Gomez, comments on the pending motion?
What was the motion?
Madam Clerk.
That the city attorney work with the city manager to make pol- uh, policy more robust to include utility bills, uh, rental agreements and consequences for not providing that information and bring it back to the first meeting in October with a vote at a second meeting in October.
Thank you. No.
Thank you. Mayor Portem. On the pending motion.
Yes, um, I, I agree with the motion. I'd like to see that we include, uh, other things other than the rental agreement mortgage statement or utility bill or some other documentation, uh, that, um, um, corroborates the person's residency, uh, in the city. So, yes, um, that's all I have to comment. I'm ready to vote.
Thank, thank you. Um, the chair will call for the vote in just a moment. So um, I, I too, um, supportive of this because, and while I understand, um, Mr. Metzler's argument completely. We, we have experienced, um, not only in this council, but I've, I've heard, um, things such as this happening throughout the state where one member or another flouts authority whatsoever and puts the city in a potential position of having to spend money to prove something when it should be readily available. So with that said, um, the chair, uh, closes the discussion period and, uh, Madam Clerk, will you kindly take the vote?
Councilmember Becerra.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez.
No.
Mayor Portem Irving.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number twenty-five, and this is, um, an item brought forward as a need to fill a, um, a seat on, for one of Mayor Portem's committees. And so, Mr. Metzler, I'll ask you to tee it up, and then, um, Mayor Portem, I'll, um, pass it to you to present your nominee.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Yes, this item is, uh, prepared by your city clerk. Uh, we have announced publicly and posted, uh, a vacancy that exists on the Community Services Advisory Committee. Um, and and with that, uh, we bring this item back for, um, your consideration.
All right, thank you. Mayor Portem, would you like to present your nominee to the council?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Um, it is with great pleasure that I recommend Mr. Terrance Stone uh, to replace, uh, our former appointee, Ms. Loretta Bowden, who, who passed most recently. But I'd like to present Mr. Terrance Stone for consideration, uh, to be appointed to the Community Services Advisory Committee. Uh, Mr. Stone is the CEO and founder of Young Visionaries Youth Leadership Academy and the president of the Southern California Black Chamber of Commerce here in, uh, the High Desert Chapter. I am very familiar with Mr. Stone's work in the community primarily because I work in the school system, but I also understand that Mr. Stone, uh, works with law enforcement. He's dedicated his entire career to working with at-risk youth and adults. Um, I know that he is an outstanding speaker. I think he's most suitable for this particular, uh, appointment, and, um, I think he would be more than, more than an asset. Mr. Stone, um, in my opinion, uh, is a bridge. He understands the business sector as well as the nonprofit sector. And, um, I believe that he has the experience that can, um, well, he can bring a lot to the, to the committee, you know. He's got that next level kind of flavor, so, um, I think his bio speaks for himself, or speaks for him. Uh, he's got a lot of accomplishments. He is present in the audience, and so if you have any specific questions that I'm unable to answer, he is here to speak for himself.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. But, but the chair does have a practice, however, that we, that we won't be asking questions of, um, um, of, of nominees, and that's just to, to protect, um, their interests. Yes, thank you. Um, but you've done a fine job in, in presenting your nominee. So, um, with that said, um, Madam Clerk, will you read the recommendation?
That your honorable city council appoint Terrance Stone to serve on the Community Services Advisory Committee as recommended by Mayor Portem Irving.
All right.
Like to make that motion?
There's, there's been no motion. The, the clerk just read the recommendation.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. So at this point, um, I'm going to open this up to council members to ask any questions that they might wish of Mayor Portem, and this is, this is just, um, really, um, you know, if there's anything in, in, uh, Mr. Stone's information as presented that, um, isn't clear to you, it's for those purposes only. We need to respect the fact that, um, when a council member brings forward a nominee, uh, we need to be very thankful that someone has stepped forward to effectively volunteer their time. So we want to be respectful to the nominee and the audience. So with that said, um, Member Becerra. Thank you, Member, uh-huh, Member Gomez.
No questions.
Thank you. And the chair has none and invites a motion from Mayor Portem Irving as it relates to her nominee.
Um, I move that this council appoints Mr. Terrance Stone to serve on the Community Services Advisory Committee.
Chair seconded. Madam Clerk, you can figure out who seconded it.
I heard Councilmember Gomez, but I also heard you.
Yes, so you, you can, you can, you can list that however you wish. All right.
Councilmember Gomez is the second.
Sure. All right, so discussion on the pending motion, Member Becerra. Excuse me. Member Gomez.
Again.
No, 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 it's because I looked at L, L, um, LI as an LB. Okay. Member Gomez.
Were you asking me something?
Discussion on the pending motion.
No, no.
Thank you. Um, Member Becerra. Thank you. And Mayor Portem, this is your nominees. Did you want to say anything further?
No, I just hope that my co- uh, colleagues agree with me and we give an affirmative vote, uh, to appoint Mr. Stone.
Sure. All right, so, um, as to the pending motion, the chair is, um, most excited, um, to see Mr. Stone as uh, the nominee for this position. He, his reputation precedes him. He's a stellar member of our community and really throughout the region. He has a heart for our youth. That's to be commended. And, um, a- and because of that, I think he's really quite an exceptional fit, um, for this advisory council. He's accustomed to working with all different types of people. I think he'll be a terrific fit within that particular body. And I have every confidence that Mr. Stone is going to do a great job. So with that said, the discussion period is now closed. Madam Clerk, the vote, please.
Councilmember Becerra.
Aye.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Mayor Portem Irving.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Passage unanimously.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Stone. We look forward to your good work, um, for our city. All right, we're going to now move on to item number twenty-seven, City Manager Reports. Mr. Metzler.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Um, we, we do have a few, uh, and I'll follow it up, uh, via email in the morning. Uh, but just, uh, for your benefit and that of the public, um, on the recreation side of the House, registration is open for the Kids Club Fall Camp. Uh, the dates for that event are going to occur on October tenth through fourteenth. Uh, full day, uh, is going to be from seven thirty to, to five thirty, and then the half day is nine thirty to two thirty. Of course, that'll be at, uh, Doris Davies, ages five, uh, through twelve. Uh, more information can be found on our rec, uh, website. Uh, library is offering a variety of storytimes, evening storytime, um, every Tuesday beginning on, uh, September thirteenth, uh, five o'clock in the evening. I will also do multilingual storytime, uh, every Wednesday beginning on September fourteenth. Uh, that'll be ten o'clock in the morning, and then we're also doing Kinder Prep Storytime, uh, every Thursday beginning September fifteenth. Uh, that's also at ten AM, um, in the morning. Uh, engineering side of the house, Seventh Avenue and Arrowhead, uh, Drive, uh, is complete and open. The project came in under budget, which we're pleased with. Uh, the Green Tree Boulevard and Spur Road intersection is scheduled to be open, uh, to traffic on Wednesday, September fifteenth, barring any unforeseen, uh, delays. Um, on the building side, uh, we had some coverage on this project, the Senior Adult Day and Clinical Care Facility, uh, which is on Amethyst Road. That's actually in, uh, plan check, uh, currently, uh, so that project is, uh, proceeding nicely. Uh, and then finally, we have a temporary certificate of occupancy issued on September first to, uh, the Amazon facility out at SCLA. Uh, so with that, uh, available for any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you. Uh, all right, and moving on to item number twenty-eight, this is discussion of possible action regarding upcoming agenda items. Member Gomez.
No, not at this moment.
Okay. Mayor Portem.
Yes, um, please correct me if I, if I'm wrong. Um, I understand that some months ago we conducted a citizen survey. Is that correct? Well, um, by the next council meeting, I'd like for staff to bring back the, the outcome of, of that survey. So that's what I would like to see.
Okay, so just a report?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Madam Clerk, the vote, please.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Member Becerra.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Becerra.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez.
Aye.
Mayor Portem Irving.
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Member Becerra. Thank you. Um, I do, but I'm going to wait until the next meeting. All right, we're going to move on to item number twenty-nine. Um, and this is reports from council members. Member Becerra.
Yes, Madam Mayor. As one of your representatives for SCAG, which is the Southern California Association of the Government, right now in the SKU, they have a resolution going to Southern California wide of broadband and to all households. They'd like all households to have broadband capability by twenty twenty-four. There's approximately five million that don't. They've already signed up one million. So we're going to be working, I'm going to pl- hand this information to our city manager to see if there's anything that we can do here in the city to bring them here, um, for help with our broadband. So that's it right now happening in SCAG.
Thank you. Member Gomez.
Yes, um, I got the opportunity today to listen to someone who has very bad concerns or concerns with, uh, agencies that we contract with. So I'll definitely be diligently helping this member to hopefully bring resolution, um, and make his life better. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Gomez. Mayor Portem.
I only have one thing to report. Uh, last Saturday, I had the, uh, pleasure of attending the NAACP Victor Valley, uh, chapter or branch. Found me fun day last Saturday. All I can say is that it was so hot. It was hot, hot, hot. I, I felt that my ankles were baking, so other than that, um, I endured the heat, but I only have that to report, so I, I got a nice little tan, so. Uh, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you, Mayor Portem. All right, so I just have a few things. I'm going to keep it very brief, so, because summer months are typically light on outside agency committees and boards. So I attended the PFAL Board Meeting, the League of California Cities Desert Mountain Division Meeting, um, and Member Becerra stood. She's had something come up, and she's always been spot on in attending those. Um, attend the Victorville Audit Planning, uh, Meeting and the Victor Valley College's, um, President's Circle. Spoke to the senior class at Lakeview Leadership Academy about the role and responsibilities of council members and answered their many questions about, uh, local policy and governance. And then I attended several ribbon cuttings, the, um, one at the Farmers Insurance Agency, and the other one, oh my goodness, the Vegan Vato. It was really good food. All right, so, um, and they made it very spicy for me, which I love that. All right, so with that said, um, that concludes our business for this evening, and as a matter of housekeeping, all council members, staff, and audience members will kindly vacate council chambers and City Hall within ten minutes. That's eight twenty-two PM, so that these facilities may be cleaned and secured for the evening. Members of the public are not permitted behind the dais. This meeting is adjourned.